And call the roll, please.
Sure. Commissioner Licky?
Here.
Commissioner Sivian?
Here.
Commissioner Tracy?
Here.
Commissioner Enger?
Here.
Commissioner Lux?
Here.
Let the record reflect Commissioner Tabarini is absent of a quorum.
Somebody forgot me.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Engler.
Here.
Thank you.
So do we have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the approval of the February 27 minutes? Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any communications correspondence at all that we need to accept tonight?
No, not received any.
Okay, thank you. Declarations of conflict of interest?
I have a conflict on item 4B.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Disclosure of ex parte communications?
Chair Tracy, I ran into applicant Jim Hyde at the coffee shop this morning.
Yeah, I've talked with the applicant in 4B several times just to get a project update over the course of the last year or so.
Thank you. Okay, this time is set aside to receive comments from the public regarding matters of general interest, not on the agenda, but related to planning commission business. Pursuant to the Brown Act, however, the planning commission cannot consider any issues or take any action on any request during this comment period. So do you have any public comments on items of general interest tonight? Seeing done, we will move into the agenda, the public hearing. Item number one, we'll have a staff report, please.
Craig Tabarini, senior planner, will deliver the staff report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair and planning commissioners. Took me a moment to remember how to start the slideshow, but we're on track now. Since the commissioners recall, this item's been before you on three occasions. There was a project submitted for review in January of last year that was proposed, and then a revision of that project, and then a workshop study session was held. So I'm going to try to keep my presentation focused on bringing you up to speed on the background and some of the changes that have been made since you last reviewed this at a workshop in November. So the project, the Oaks at Foss Creek subdivision, that's before you tonight, proposes four actions, requests approval, adoption of a recommendation to the city council to adopt a mitigated negative declaration for the project. A request for a general plan amendment to designate the property from industrial to residential land use. And that action does require the affirmative vote of four members in order to support an approval of that recommendation. Then we have a land use code amendment requesting approval of a residential master plan zoning for the property. And finally, land use entitlements for subdivision of 7.28 acres into 29 clustered residential single-family lots. This aerial shows you the property with an overlay of development footprint. The revised, this was the original scheme, the revised project stays within the same existing disturbed areas of the site. And we have the Foss Creek, which runs along the westerly, or I'm sorry, the easterly boundary. And then an unnamed tributary which runs across, bisects the site down near the right-hand side of the property. Seamy Winery is, of course, is to the north, and then this is Hillsburg Avenue on the west, on the east side. This was a constraints map that was provided to the commission in previous reviews, and it shows, the large gray swath shows you the creek areas and riparian areas that impact the property and essentially occupy about 2.7 acres of the 7.2 acre developable site. The areas in color show you the existing parcels that are available for development outside of the creek setback area. So again, as I mentioned in the actions required, we have a general plan amendment and a rezoning for 8.9 acres of land from industrial to residential. A tentative map for subdivision of the property into 29 small lots and three common parcels. That would include four below market rate units in the project, design review for the overall concept and the architecture of the homes. And then a tree permit for removal of a substantial 30-inch oak tree that's in an access road. And a new request, which is for a variance to allow five lots to encroach within the creek setback, and I'll explain that a bit further in my presentation. So to start, the general plan land use amendment is the first action that needs to be taken affirmatively for this project to move forward. The commission had previous concerns with the loss of industrial land supply in the city, and we went through an extensive review of that during the last previous hearings. Just to reiterate what the city, what staff and the applicants review, research had uncovered was that we have, of the 300 acres of land that are available for industrial development in the city, there's 10 acres that are vacant in the north end of town comprised of about four parcels that are in various areas along Grove Street and near this site. And then primarily in the south area of town, south of Memorial Bridge, there's a couple of large parcels. The Sire property, which is more of a corporation yard property, is largely undeveloped with structures. And then there's a vacant storage yard site that's largely undeveloped with structures. And that roughly is about 35 acres of land in the south area of town. Not included is the Sire gravel quarry, which is 90-plus acres that is going to be in operation for the foreseeable future. So the previous plans that were submitted to you, the first plan had a development of 44 homes clustered with garages facing an internal driveway and homes facing the creek and interior courtyards. And that plan was essentially continued for redesign. An applicant brought back a design that had a revised scheme with homes facing the roadways, but with a somewhat unconnected neighborhood feel to it, with homes in various blocks throughout the development. So that led to a community meeting, a workshop, that presented a plan for all single-family residential development detached throughout the project with a reduced density to 29 lots, garage entries to the homes. Floor plans oriented towards the street, and then rear yards with fences and walkways along the creek area to provide that dual interaction of creek and street frontage that was desired for this development. So again, the current plan basically took direction from the workshop and refined the plan to come up with the final street scape and lot layout. The design details were more further developed. The portion of the site where lots seven, eight, nine, and 10 are, that is the area where there's encroachment into the creek setback in order to create more regularly yard patterns for the lots seven, eight, and 10. And then on the 20 through 26 lots, the second phase of the project, there's slight encroachments on the side yards into the creek setback. So the applicant has requested a variance in order to create regular lot patterns, and they felt the commission would be supportive of that. This, all of these encroachments are in areas that were previously disturbed by grading, so there's not any additional impact on the riparian setback. And if the variance were not supported, it would be a simple matter of just reverting the property lines to follow that creek setback line. And these lots would lose some yard area, but it is essentially similar to what was presented to you at the workshop and on prior design schemes that the commission had looked at. So staff has recommended support of that component in your packet, and I'll go through that in my slideshow. So in the design details, just to reiterate, the project is influenced by craftsman-style homes. It's a modern architectural, but with a craftsman-style feel with the materials and color palettes, roof overhangs and decks. Again, the units are all, units are all two-story and three bedrooms. Adaptable units are still within the project so that people can enter in at the garage level and access a bedroom. Private yards are provided for all lots, more of a conventional residential neighborhood pattern. And then the creek open space areas are still accessed as part of the project as amenity and the trees in the creek riparian area are preserved. The, again, the density was reduced to 29 lots. There's no more three-story plans, they're all two-story homes. All units are detached, there's garages with conventional setbacks, units facing the road. They have added recreational amenities to the project for the neighborhood residents. They have added recreational amenities to the project for the neighborhood residents. There was a concern about traffic safety at Grove and Chiquita Road, and there was a supplemental attachment in your exhibit that discusses that, and our traffic engineer, I believe, is here tonight to speak to that if there's any further concerns, but essentially there's been no incidents at that intersection, so there's no reason for any traffic calming or no recorded incidents at that intersection. So it's deemed to be a safe and acceptable intersection, so no further changes were warranted. We have the five lots that propose the minor creek setbacks. All homes have sidewalks on both sides of the street to improve access, and again, the rear yards have been increased for a majority of the lots. Just to, applicant's going to go through their perspectives, so I'm just going to try to run through these somewhat quickly. This is the Chiquita Road perspective. We have a view from Chiquita Road when you come down towards the project. On the right-hand side, there's an entry into the project. When you enter the project, these are the first two homes you would see before turning left at the dog leg in the road. This is a view of the homes that would, on the sides that would face the creek pathways, and you see fencing, privacy fencing, and what would be CMU block, split-faced block walls to create planters and break up that wall or that fence along the creek setback to soften it. And then in terms of landscaping and lighting, this plan has been somewhat further refined, but is essentially similar in palette to what's been presented before. We have a significant tree-lined frontage along Chiquita Road. We have some large replacement oaks along the entry, one large replacement oak along the Chiquita Road frontage, and then street trees following inside the project, lots of replanting in the riparian setback areas, and preservation of all the trees in the creek setback area. The lighting plan has been fully resolved to have standard residential decorative street lighting, 13-foot tall poles along the street, and then ballard lighting along the pathways to accent the creek pathway and provide a sense of security. Then in terms of the tree preservation or removal, as the commission would recall, there's a significant number of trees being preserved in the riparian setback. There's over 100 trees being, well, there's several, a significant amount of trees being removed for construction of the homes, but a significant also amount of replacement being proposed. One of the proposals the applicant has made was to keep a tree along Chiquita Road frontage, which is right near lot 3, in order to try to preserve the existing streetscape. Chiquita Road frontage was dominated by large oaks, currently is on this side of the project. On the, on the Chiquita Grove frontage, there were more trees intended to be preserved, but only two have been retained. So the plan for this project was to remove the trees due to road widening and replant the frontage. This tree number 67 on the left-hand side can be maintained, saved. Structurally, though, it's unfortunately not the best-looking of the oak trees, so staff would question whether it warrants protection or if we'd just rather see maybe a large specimen oak on either end of the parking strip that's proposed on Chiquita Road, similar to the large oaks being presented here. So staff would just offer that up as something for consideration for the commission if it warrants the effort to save that tree or just rather replant with similar new trees along that frontage to get a nice new planted street edge along that side of the street. Again, this is just an example, a blow-up of the Chiquita Road frontage. We've got two new large entry oaks, and then we've got a large oak proposed here, and then this would be the oak to remain, and that could easily be replaced with another specimen oak to just balance out that streetscape. So real quickly on the environmental review, the environmental hearing was, testimony was taken, the commission concluded that they, that part of the hearing, and moved on to the entitlements. We've, since you're making a recommendation at the city council, we've presented that resolution to you again for recommended read, adoption. Essentially, when you act on the entitlements, you're certified that the negative declaration covers the entitlements. Given the revisions, we had our consultant take a look at the environmental document and provided you with a memorandum that explains that all of the changes that have been made for this current plan have been adequately assessed by the current environmental document. No further review is necessary to that end. So with that, I'm just going to run through a few minor recommendations we have made in the report for you tonight. Essentially, we're recommending support of the project with a couple of changes to consider. One is that on Chiquita Road frontage, there are three Plan 3s along that, along that street frontage with six home types, or six lots. So we're suggesting that the middle Plan 3 could come up with a different color and material scheme as a condition of approval to further differentiate that streetscape. We think that would be an enhancement of the project along Chiquita Road to get as much variation as possible, and we think that's a fairly simple change to make. On the right-hand side, on the slide, you'll see that there's a stepped wall being shown. That's for the lots 11 through 19 that back up to the Seamy Winery driveway. Those were proposing a six-foot fence on top of a six-foot wall, which would have created a 12-foot wall behind the residences. So we talked to the applicant about the need to break that wall and fence plane with a three-foot minimum separation, and so they can accommodate that, and so we're recommending that in the conditions as a minor change to the plan. And that's been provided in your packet as exhibit 13. It's a fairly simple solution to make and eliminates the tall wall behind these people's homes without any softening of that wall. Along the entry into the project, lot 6, that home has a garage facing the exterior side. It would be heavily landscaped, but we're suggesting adding some windows to the lower elevation along the garage to break up that facade if that seems appropriate. That's recommended as a condition. And then on Plan 6, there's a blank wall. These are interior-facing walls, but we thought it might be good to have some windows in these blank areas to also help create a, eliminate a blank wall plane. The applicant is willing to implement that as well as a condition of approval. And then a couple of plans that staff noticed on the subdivision plan, lots 7 and 8 and lot 16 and 17 have the same plant site, same floor plan with a different scheme. We were suggesting that perhaps a different plant type would be a preferable solution. If the commission agrees, we could implement that through a condition of approval, and instead of a Plan Type 6 on light 8, we could do a Plan Type 5, which would give us further variation throughout the subdivision. Aside from that, though, we think the project has done a good job in coming up with varied plant types and good architectural palette. And then we also noticed on Plan 5, there's somewhat of a off-balance, lower gable end over the garage. It doesn't really look out of character, it's just a question whether or not it would look better if that were centered over the garage or if there were a window over the bathroom area on this blank wall, whether or not that's something that, as a detail, should be incorporated into the plan. Again, that would be a fairly simple thing to incorporate into the plan if it's deemed necessary. So that concludes staff's overview of the project. Again, we have the recommendation to take four actions for adoption of the negative, recommending to the city council adoption of the negative declaration, general plan amendment, land use code amendment, and land use entitlements. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time or as needed by the commission and the applicants here as well to provide you with a detailed presentation. Thank you.
Questions?
Yeah, I've got one. On the north side of Chiquita, when the project is complete, will there be a sidewalk that goes down the north side of Chiquita to Grove, or is the only sidewalk going to be on the south side associated with the, with the project that's on the south side of Chiquita?
There will be a sidewalk on both sides. So this exhibit shows pedestrian circulation, and there will be a sidewalk all the way down to Chiquita where we hit the two homes that aren't part of the subdivision development. There would be a concrete, asphaltic temporary path that would connect to the sidewalk on Grove Street. This was discussed with the prior public work strength, Brent Salmy, who agreed to the temporary asphaltic path because putting in a permanent sidewalk would require removal of the trees, and at some future point, we expect a roadway widening to occur, and so he recommended deferring a permanent sidewalk until that time. A concrete, asphaltic path was considered to be suitable for the interim.
Okay, and the city has a right of way to do all that?
Yes, that's all within, within the right of way.
Thanks.
All one question? Will that pathway meet ADA standards?
Yes, it would. It's required to. It would have, yes.
Because we've already approved design review with a public hearing, do the changes that you're recommending now have, will they have any impact on going back to a public hearing?
You haven't approved design review. You've closed the hearing on the negative declaration process, so you don't have to have a continual hearing on the negative declaration. We only need to have a hearing on the entitlements. So the general plan amendment, rezoning, and the subdivision and design review are all before you tonight for hearing.
So I had a quick question about the variance, which is, which is new, which we hadn't seen before. Can you go over, basically, again, the rationale for allowing this variance, both the one on the, I guess, the one on the south side and the one on the north side?
So the, I don't know, does the cursor show one? Yes, yes. So that lot 7, there's the creek setback that cuts into these lots, 7 and 8?
Right.
And then on 10, and then minor sweeps into the lots on 20 and 26?
Right.
So the justification really came down to the fact that a significant amount of the site, because there's two creeks, there's a significant amount of the site that's encumbered by riparian and creek area, and it severely restricts where you can cluster development. And so the thinking was that, given the significant constraint by the two creeks and given the previously developed nature of these areas, that granting the variance would not violate the intent of the setback and that there was a unique enough of a physical constraint that it warranted the request for variance to be made. And the benefit of the variance is that it creates, all the lots have regular boundary lines, and these lots, mainly lot 7 in particular, would be able to maintain a fairly decent yard. So it's really a matter of if we were to require compliance, it wouldn't really gain anything environmentally, so it just seemed to be reasonable to consider allowing it.
Okay. Thank you.
Now I have a question.
Yes.
The homeowners association then would be responsible for making sure that those areas that, where the creek is, and all of that area there, they're going to be responsible for the maintenance and the care of it?
That's correct. There's a condition currently, and I believe it may be a mitigation as well, that requires a vegetation management plan to be submitted for the creek area in particular, and it requires them to maintain that in a healthy condition. Now, minimal intrusion into that for maintenance is expected. It's expected that people will stay on the path and will be, will stay out of that area.
And that, while I'm talking too specifically of these lots that are going to have, be able to encroach on that area?
So these would be, there'd be a pathway in front of these lots and then private fences, so that each lot 7, that would be part of their residential yard, so they'd maintain that? And then outside the fence, the HOA would be responsible for the pathways and the planting outside of that fence?
Thank you.
Any other questions at all, Steph? Okay, at this time, if the applicant would like to make some comments, please come to the podium.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the planning commission. First of all, I would very much like to thank Maya and especially Craig over the last year, year and a half, for all of the hard work. The staff report that came out the end of last week is very complete, extremely well-done, and it takes a lot of, lot of effort on everybody's part, both our team and Craig, but Craig has done a very exceptional job, so I want that. The second thing I want to do is to thank the commission for our workshop last December. I think it was middle of December, about three months ago. I think it was extremely helpful for our group, our team, as well as to get all the comments from the planning commission, and I really encourage you to do that on all projects going forward, especially if I come have another project, which I hope you do.
Early.
I think that it's, looking back, if we could have done it a year ago, we would have been having this conversation and vote a year ago instead of today, but we are where we are, and our team, we put a lot of effort in working with the commission as well as the, with Greg, or pardon me, with Craig and Maya, and we really appreciate it. So we are here to make a very brief presentation. We have the whole team, so we'll just go, the staff report and the report that Craig gave hits almost all the items, so we'd like to point out a few things, and then obviously we're available for any questions, comments, or whatever. And I just want to point out that out of the 29 units, we have four what I call workforce housing. There's a lot of definitions, so I don't, and then, of course, we have the three AD units, which are a market rate, which are one-bedroom units on the first floor with separate, they're like one-bedroom apartments with their own entrance, so that's something that we feel very strong about. So I will, I'll have Kathy, our architect, followed by Cora, our engineer, and then we're also, and we have our, we have our landscape designer here as well as our traffic study, Dailene, and so we are, we're here to, and Dev is here from the Housing Trust. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for having us back again. I'm not going to dwell on anything that Craig covered, but we have some slides in there that are a little bit duplicative, and I'll try to keep things moving so we don't hold you up too long here. So the day that we were here for your work study was also the day you approved your new design guidelines, and since then, there was some question about how we met your new design guidelines, and I provided sort of a point-by-point topic or memo to you, and hopefully you received those as part of your packet, but we did go through and very carefully examine everything within the new design review guidelines. We feel that we've achieved design excellence in this project. We are supporting the walkable and bikeable Healdsburg. The relationship to the natural resources is a really big part of our project, the creek. And then we looked at the historic types of homes in Healdsburg, and again, we really liked the pedestrian connection and front porches of the Healdsburg's craftsman style, and so that was what we decided to use in our project. And also that I haven't tried to artificially create different styles to provide a design. I believe, since this is all being built at once, that the homes are all in a craftsman style, but in harmonious colors to the, each other and to the environment. So that was our proposal for design excellence. You've already seen this slide. This was the very first slide, first design that we had. It had 44 homes, and now we're at 29, so we've definitely reduced the density for you. This, this plan was the next plan that we came up with. We heard you loud and clear. We wound up eliminating the triplexes entirely on this and went to a more regular style of subdivision. In this instance, was what we came to you with the, our works, our work session. We introduced, is in our current site plan, we introduced a Plan 6 that had more of a two-car garage element, eliminated some of the one-car garages. So this plan is also on the entry of Public Road A, and I'll be getting to that slide that shows lots 7 and 8, but lot 6 is a smaller, narrower house than Plan 5, and Plan 5 is five feet wider, so it wouldn't fit to replace one of those homes, but I will get to that when we get to the elevations and the perspectives. This is a typical view in the subdivision. The little red arrow and dot of the plan shows you where that view is taken from, and it just shows you how we have these two-car garages with the minimum 18-foot driveways in front for room for parking, which was a request that you had, that we have a more typical type of home on the project. Oh, it's not moving forward. Oh, there we go. Okay, so here we have, again, you see the little red arrow, and this is when you're turning So here we have, again, you see the little red arrow, and this is when you're turning into the development. So it's Lot Eight and Lot Seven that are both a Plan Six, that was a suggestion to replace one of these homes. Now, in the staff report, we've agreed to do all the other changes. But in this particular case, no other plan fits other than another Plan Two. And we don't feel that that would add any great variety to this, to remove a Plan Six and put another Plan Two in. And we feel that there's enough difference, both in terms of their elevation and color, that it still provides a lot of variety. It'll be the only location within the entire 29 lots where we have the same plan next to each other, because we've already agreed to replace a Plan Five on Lot Seventeen.
Let me just ask, isn't one of them a lefty and one of them a righty, so they aren't different to that extent?
Yes, yes. Okay, and this is the entry off of Chiquita Road. And we've agreed, no problem, to put a couple windows on the Lot Six. We have specifically designed that as an entry with a lot of trees, make it a very welcoming entry. We didn't want to have our yard on that side. It would have been a little too public. And so, but we're happy to put windows on there without a problem. And then here, you can see Lot Seventeen is indicated as a Plan Five now. So instead of having two Plan Fours together, we have a Four and a Five. We have no problem doing that. It's easy for us to do. And then these are the final three plans. And I put this up primarily to show you Lot Twenty-seven is a Plan Five A. We have no problems putting a window into the bath area, and I'll show you that in the elevation. I've also included a floor plan to explain why we don't want to move the window or the bay. But I'll get to that in the elevations. And then this is the rear of Lots Seven and Eight. Again, this is where the staff has asked us to replace that. But again, I think you can see there's a lot of variety between Lots Seven and Eight, from both the front and the rear. And we'd like to leave it as is. And then you see the planters would be part of the homeowners association. You were asking about who would maintain them, and those would be maintained by the homeowners association. Okay, I just, I don't think you want us to dwell on each plan, but I do have all the elevations in here. We've indicated all of the dimensions for all the heights that were requested. I wanted to mention that on Plan One, where we say rear, that's actually facing Chiquita. So Plans One, Two, and Three are sort of double-sided. They have, their garages are facing our new public road. And the front porch elevation that we're calling rear is actually what you're going to see on Chiquita, so. Same thing here on Plan Two. The front elevation is facing the new public street, and what we call rear is going to be facing onto Chiquita. Again, Plan Three. Plan Three has our accessory dwelling unit. So in the front elevation is the entry to the accessory dwelling unit, and the main unit you see up on the rear. So there's two front porches, basically, on that plan. Okay, so here's Plan Four. Nothing really to say, and this has a gable, and this has a hip roof of the same plan, two different color schemes. Plan Five, again, you see the sort of blank wall, which we're happy to put a high window that'll look just like the window to the right of it. We put it in both. Here's the floor plan to explain. The window that you're seeing is in the bedroom on the lower portion of the second floor. And the window is centered in the bedroom. And even if we shoved it all the way over, it would still not be in the center of the garage. And so that option of kind of moving that window over doesn't make sense. But it's simple for us to put a window in over the tub that would match the window next to it over the two-story space. So we'd like to do that as the option. And then the Plan Six A and Six B are the two plans next to each other that we would like to keep that way. And I just want to show you the straight-on elevation. Six A is a hip. Six B is a gable. We really feel that they look different enough, and they're in reverse of each other, that on Lot Seven and Eight, it would be okay to keep it in that one location. Sure. Okay.
There was, excuse me.
Yes.
Question. There was also a recommendation, staff, to have windows on the upper floor, both the less.
Yes, and we're going to do that. We're happy to do that. Not a problem.
Right.
And I was requested to create a diagram that helped explain window privacy. Staff went through it in great depth, and I think I gave you a blow-up attachment to your report that's a little bit easier to read than these slides. But the red were the windows on the first floor, and the blue were the windows on the second floor. And we very purposely have everything staggered, so nobody's looking directly into each other's windows. And those Plans One, Two, and Three, where they have a side yard easement, that's where you have the blank walls. So there's privacy for the other house next to the house that has the yard. And we showed you the diagram is here as well. And since now we're not having the two Plan Fours together, there's even more variety, even though those were staggered. So we've not only tried to always have a different plan next to each other, but in addition, there's some staggering taking place, so. And that concludes my report. I'm going to give it over to our civil engineer now to go through some of his items. And at the end, we're happy to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
My name is Court Mansal. I'm with Mansal Civil Engineering. I want to thank you again for your time. Just going to go through some site development specifics to go through the general site plan. We enter off of Chiquita with a 24-foot road, two 12-foot travel lanes, no parking on either side. That fronts the first portion of the development off of Chiquita. We do now show sidewalk on both sides. When you transition and cross over the unnamed tributary, it changes into a 36-foot wide public street. That is two 10-foot travel lanes and then eight-foot parking on each side. We also provide a minimum of 18-foot driveways on each of these lots for additional parking. Private Road B takes off of the cul-de-sac. The cul-de-sac does not have parking. But Private Road B is a 20-foot access road. Will provide ultimately emergency vehicle access through the Simi Winery. And I'll go through that in a bit. We did run this by the refuse company, Mike Lockwood, and he found that it was acceptable as far as trash pickup. And we wanted to just make sure that, one of the big discussion topics that we've had over the past three workshops or public hearings and workshops, was to make sure that these homes really front of the road and had more of a living feel towards the public road, which I think this plan clearly provides. The parking, we are required, per code, to provide 58 parking spaces. This plan accommodates 109, which equates to 3.7 parking spaces per residence. Again, most have two-car garages. In the front of the development, a couple of the residences do have one-car garages. In those scenarios, we reserve spaces where we have the perpendicular parking off of the public road. The perpendicular parking spaces are privately, they are owned by the HOA, so they're not part of the public right-of-way. And they'll be maintained by the HOA, and enforcement of those reserved spaces will be on the HOA. The ADU units are also in the first part of the development, when there is the additional perpendicular parking off of the public road for those units. The site plan does rely on turnaround. The cul-de-sac is within a creek setback. Again, it's a public road, so it's not part of the variance request because it is a public road. We did have a biologist and a geotechnical engineer evaluate the bank and the riparian area and that. There is an existing home there right now, which is part of the reason why we don't have the loss of habitat discussion with the biologist came up. He felt that we didn't have a loss of habitat because of the existing development there. And then the geotechnical engineer provided a letter for you guys addressing the stability of that bank of Boss Creek. Next slide. So this, there was a question about the encroachment of the private lots onto the riparian area. This one does a little better job of portraying exactly where those encroachments are. We feel strongly that it would be, you know, we'd like to have a more standard lot on Seven, Eight, and Ten. If the commission felt that an encroachment wasn't warranted, we could change property line back to follow those relatively easy. Plans Twenty and Twenty-Six have a very minor encroachment, as you can see. This plan shows the lot, green is private lots. The orangier color, I guess, on this slide is the public roads. And then we have HOA to maintain parcels, A, B, and C, blue, yellow, and the magenta color. This is the pedestrian connectivity plan. As you can see, we provide a pretty good pedestrian connection throughout the site, all along all public roads, private roads on both sides, and then circulation along the riparian corridor. There is an existing crossing over the unnamed tributary. This slide also shows the interim AC path. While it is interim and the pathway is four-foot and is asphalt, it functions very much like a standard sidewalk. It would meet ADA accessible requirements. And it is, there is a raised curb there, so it's not flush to the ground. It's elevated, which provides vehicular safety as well. This slide is the phasing plan. Green is Phase One, with one exception, bio-retention areas would be built in as part of Phase One. So there's a bio-retention area behind Lot Twenty-Six that would be required as Phase One to treat stormwater prior to outletting to the stream channels. Phase Two is in blue, and then magenta is Phase Three. This is the plan.
Is the bioswale above ground, or is that tubes under the ground?
It's, well, it's at, it's a little bit below existing grade. So it's like a depressed area where we direct the water, gives it a chance to infiltrate. Any higher storms would fill up the smaller depressed basin and overflow. This shows the agreement with Simi. So while we don't need the lot line adjustment any further because of the redesign of the development, we still are requesting that and have agreement with Simi to, for them to quickly in their easement. Currently, they access in a loop form, so they come along the western side of our development in, you know, a varying road width, but it's one direction. They loop around the development and they come, they come back through on the west side. So the agreement that's in place is that we would increase their west side access to a minimum of 20 foot, so they can come in and out completely separate from this development. They would retain an easement over Private Driveway B. So if they needed to have access through there, they would. Our agreement is to provide a gate at the end of our development, and then another gate as they exit the Simi property for an emergency vehicle. The easement is shown, the EVA easement is shown as a dash line in this slide. Next slide is our tree demolition, or a tree removal and replacement plan. So you can see, we're trying to maintain trees within the riparian corridors. There are quite a few trees within the site development itself, but they are smaller trees. There's a lot of ornamental trees. The site's fairly well disturbed, so there's a lot of smaller scrubber within, scrub trees within the site development area. And the larger trees, which we're retaining, are within the riparian corridors. This slide shows the fire accessible pathway through the site. The city requested that we provide a turning template for the fire truck. This is, the colors are a little bit hard to read on here, but there's an orange line that shows the tire locations for each side. The green line, I believe, reflects the overhang of the fire truck, the blue line are the curb lines. And then we have a further detailed plan at the entrance, so it can show how the fire truck will enter and exit from, coming from either direction into the property. There's been some discussion about the back retaining walls along lots 11 through 19. We have some grading options here. We showed a, the wall height ranges from one to six feet in its highest location, and then we showed a fence on top of that. Certainly, there's design options, one of which would be to do a smaller three-foot wall, and then we could do a graded slope and a fence on top of that. Another option is to have a, have a steps retaining wall, as shown on the right. So we feel that we can accommodate, you know, something that meets the code relatively easily on those back lots. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions now or after. I'll turn it over to Landscape.
You have to do a small package wastewater plant joining to Lot One, correct?
Correct.
A lift station, and I didn't see in the application, and there's a lot to look at. Is there a plan to landscape that area? Most of it's below grade, but you'll have like a utility box above grade?
Yeah, most of it will be below grade. Certainly, there will be landscaping around it. You can see some of the landscaping, actually, in this slide. We will have to refine those details. Public Works did request that we look further downstream at, we're about a three-foot of separation difference now from getting everything to flow via gravity. I don't feel that we're going to be able to figure out how to accommodate that. So I think the pump system, which is typical, if you go further up Chiquita as well, I feel like that's going to be the option that we have to, we have to go with.
And who will own and maintain that?
Maybe a better question for our Public Works Director.
It was my understanding through the prior Public Works Director that it was his preference that it would be public, because that way we could assure it would be maintained. The counter to that, obviously, is the maintenance responsibility, which are already stretched pretty thin. So the decision hasn't quite been made yet. We will be working with the applicant to figure out the best option.
All right, with that, I'll turn it over.
Good evening. Hello. My name is Pam Nagel. I'm with Integrated Design Studio. I'm the landscape architect. And I think we've addressed a number of the points so far, but what I would like to do is discuss the public areas of the project and common areas. So on this plan, you can see them on, in Area 14, which is kind of denoted as an active play area. Right there, I'm kind of circling. Oh, thank you, Craig. And then also, we've got Area 13, which is the playground, some play structures, which I'll discuss a little further.
Is 14 where the bioswale is?
No, actually, bioswale are noted as two on this plan. So if you look, the sort of blue-green areas up to the, basically, the west area there, right there, bioswale is integrated into a number of different areas where you see two. There you go. Thank you, Craig. So those are bioswales, not active play areas, but literally sunken areas where the plants can take inundation and treat the water, and the soil will treat the water as well. So let's see. I think I could move forward here a little bit. Oh, I pointed my hand. Okay, thanks. Oh, beautiful. Briefly, I'll just mention the street section, which we had added dimensions to. And if you look, it's a little hard to tell. It's between the sections, AA is taken between 23, 24, and 15, right around 15, on the Public Road A. Okay, so that's where the street section is taken. So what we're doing here is we're showing that the 20-foot street right-of-way with eight-foot parking on either side, five-foot sidewalk on either side of the road, and sidewalk planting that will vary depending on where it is on the street, between 11 and 16 on that west side, and between 10 and 23. So that'll be porch-to-porch, essentially, is what you're seeing edge-to-edge there in that section.
So I had a question on this.
Sure.
The sidewalk planting is.
That, the sidewalk planting, is that the front yard versus a median?
Let's see, it includes, uh, both, it's going to include the, uh, yard as well, I believe. Up to porch, porch level, porch, porch elevation. So we're planting up to the porch essentially. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Depending on the building, uh, where the sides of the buildings are. Okay, um, moving right along. Here's our planting zone legend, which we, we've referred to before, but it shows how we've looked at dividing the trees. We, we've actually started specing some of the landscape and the site, street trees. And, um, this is divided up into a riparian planting zone. Both, um, active play, uh, sidewalk, public entry planting as well as, um, it's, it's, I'm sorry, um, basically edge transition zones as well as the entry zone. And this kind of we've referred to here. We had a bit of, um, excellent, um, input from the, um, city arborist, James McNair, who kind of went through our planting list, made a few suggestions and recommendations on the entire plant list. And so we, we have revised that, um, to reflect his comments, suitable for Heelsburg area. And, um, we won't, I won't go through all the plants. But this, this literally, this basically shows representative plants of our entry planting scheme. Streetscape planting along the sides where, uh, essentially the edges of those sidewalk areas. Riparian planting, park play planting, including turf and bioretention planting for those number two sunken areas. I believe Craig referred to the lighting, um, so I won't go into that too far.
I have a question. Will there be a separate landscaping and lighting district for the subject property?
No, there will not. It's the, um,
So all responsible to HOA?
The pedestrian lighting will be, the street lighting will be public street lighting.
Right.
Correct. So we did touch a bit on the fences, um, but I do want to, um, bring it up a, a little bit into the walls. I think it's going to be a little easier to see on our details. So these are actually the sound walls that you see along the backs of, uh, a number of, uh, areas on, on the, uh, site. So they're facing both the railroad, um, easement as well as the creek. And you're seeing base, the, the green and the purple lines, if I'm saying that correctly. I'm sorry, the green and the orange lines are, um, combined fence, fence and wall combinations, which will mitigate the sound from these areas. So we, we worked with a sound consultant to develop these as well as stagger them. So it's not one monolithic wall, but they, they, they alternate in and out with planting as well as just fencing. And the, the fences are thicker reinforced with plywood to make sure that they, uh, deal with the sound mitigation issues.
And you've done testing to, to make sure that this is going to be sufficient?
What we've done is responded to their recommendations as to what type of fencing and wall would be.
How did they figure that out?
I believe, uh, they, they recommended certain types of construction that we, we have reflected in our details. I'm not sure how they figured it out. Do you have, do you have any insight on that, Craig?
Yes, our sound consultants, Ellingworth and Rodkin, and they have done sound testing of these different assemblies. And so they know that they'll block a certain decibel level if we do the certain thickness. So essentially what these walls are, are they're three quarter inch solid plywood. And then there's bat, bats on top of that. And as long as there's no gap at the base or at the gates, they're, they're protecting the outdoor space with the sound.
How did they figure the decibel level that would, we would be facing in, in that area?
Oh, they, they look at the intermittent, uh, train sounds and then they also look at the highway sounds. And they've done, um, monitoring where they physically go out to the site. Of course, they can't do it for the train, but they know what the train sounds are. They can find that in other locations, but also for the highway sound. And so they, they actually know what kind of, um, sound pattern is generated and what is necessary to block it. I believe we have our sound report as part of your packet. And I'd be happy to answer questions outside of this as well. I've worked with them for many, many years, decades.
I just wanted to be sure that we're dealing with that sound.
Yes, and the sound is actually for it to protect the outdoor space, these fences. And then the house itself and the windows protect any sound on the inside. And then we have air conditioning so that no one has to have their windows open if the train's going by and it bothers them, that kind of thing. So.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Kathy. One other thing I'd like to refer you to, and we can, we can walk through the boards, but, um, we're looking at trying to find, um, the lower level of these, um, sound fences are, um, split face CMU block. So I've got some samples here for, and we can refer to them and actually come up and see them when, when there's time.
Even the one with the plywood?
Uh, yes, yes.
So that plywood sits on a block wall?
Block wall, correct. So these are previously provided, um, details of the fence, uh, sorry, the mailbox. And the screening plants at, at utility boxes to show screening. They're not just sitting out there in the landscape. Um, and we also added a tree protection fencing detail that works on the, uh, recommendations of the project, um, arborist, who prepared the reports. And we actually elaborated and, and went a little bit further for better tree, tree protection for, uh, ISA standards, International Society of Arbiculture. And I believe you've seen, these are the, um, walls that, um, both Craig and, uh, Court have referred to. I do, do want to point out that they will be integrally colored concrete, so they will not be gray. We have a sample of the Davis color. It's a nice tan that we're thinking those would be, um, integrally colored, not faced, but part of the coloring.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Says, uh, in between the two steps of the fence, there'd be a three foot minimum, but it doesn't show any maximum. Do we have that dimension available?
I believe it'll be close to the three feet. Court, do you have a comment on that?
If we were to do a step wall, we would do three feet. That's, that's the minimum requirement. We'd want to maximize and maintain as much of the rear yard as possible.
Exactly, that's my point. I just don't want to see something six foot and have somebody lose half their backyard.
And, um, I'm sure we could address that in the conditions that if we do a terrace wall, we could limit it to a three foot.
So yes, perhaps three foot minimum and maximum. Any questions on the walls other, other than that? One thing I wanted to get to was the play areas and where on, um, so, uh, we had some correspondence with the community development folks. And their recommendations on, on having a play structure in the active, uh, area number 14, which I can roll back to. We suggested a, a miracle play, playground structure and its age appropriateness is for ages five to 12. There's opportunities to have a few outdoor grills, benches. And, um, the fall zones for the play area would like, most likely be the, um, engineered wood fiber. So that was something that, um, we were asked to at least envision and see what could be there in the play area. And I want to run back actually to this. So the areas, we're, we're looking at area 14, which is up there, um, as being the most active play area, kicking balls around. That would be manicured turf. But where you see 15, there's kind of that long area along the path where we would like to have those also as being, uh, you know, roughly 20 to 30 foot wide, maybe 60 or 80 feet long, just other field areas where the informal play could happen or just running around, throwing a frisbee or some, some sort of thing like that. So I just wanted to differentiate those outdoor spaces as well as the two elevens on either side of, um, units 19 and unit 11. Those would be more, um, also informal sitting, park bench, hangout areas. That covers that. And that's the end of my slides. Do you have any questions for landscape?
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Conclude the applicant.
Comments?
If there's any questions regarding traffic, Deleena's here, but that's our presentation and we hope it clarified. So we're here to answer questions or comments or whatever. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to hear from the traffic engineer, maybe you had something different?
Joe, you had a?
Yeah, I have a, I have another, uh, sorry, I didn't ask this before, but on the, regarding the lift stations, Court. So we're proposing that how many houses will be taken care of by a lift station?
They all will.
All of them will?
They all gravity to that one lift station and it lifts from there into the nearest manhole, which is actually a very close, right in Chiquita, elevation wise, it just doesn't, doesn't work.
Just for the record, um, I think that it's very important that it is not left to the HOA to take care of this. There are several areas in Heelsburg right now that have been left to the HOA and they're in disrepair. And the, you know, these subdivisions are 30 plus years old and people are panicked and they don't know what to do. And it wasn't built to city standards to begin with.
Yep.
So therefore I think that it's very, very important that it be built to city standards and maintained by the city.
Certainly, well, I mean, we'll, we'll have discussion with public works and.
I think it should be decided before this meeting's over.
I could speak to that if through the chair, if necessary?
Yes.
Currently, the conditions do require that the HOA association dues include a fee structure that will cover the maintenance cost of the lift station.
But that it's publicly owned?
Publicly owned, publicly owned, but that we want to receive.
Over the last two years, the discussions, if I remember, were brand is, the HOA, I believe, uh, at one of our first hearings, would charge the, it would be HOA, there'd be a fee, and we would reimburse the city for the maintenance. That's where I think we discussed it.
Which, which that would be acceptable. The, the instance that I'm talking about, the HOA has broken down over time.
Well, no, that's what we're saying is we would pay the city to maintain it.
Perfect, thank you.
That's the discussions we had with Brad for two years.
Can we make that, can we write that as a condition of approval?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay.
Could we hear from the applicant's traffic engineer, please, regarding the safety of Grove at, at Heelsburg and Chiquita? So my question is, uh, there's been some testimony by, um, at least one commissioner about people that are coming southbound on Heelsburg Avenue, turning right onto Grove and hitting the apex and zipping by Chiquita to where it's dangerous. So I'd like to hear your professional opinion about the, the need or no need for traffic calming in that area.
Okay, my name is Deleena Whitlock, I'm with W Trans in Santa Rosa, and I'm actually a resident here in Heelsburg as well. We have looked at this, and as a matter of fact, I just pulled collision reports again in preparation for the hearing. There have been, um, only, there was only, in the last five years, there was only one collision reported at the Chiquita and Grove Street intersection and two at Heelsburg Avenue. For both of those locations, given the volume of traffic that enters the intersection, the collision rates are, are quite low. At Chiquita and Grove, it was point oh three and the average for a T intersection that's stop controlled on one leg is point one eight statewide. So it's about one sixth, the, the statewide average rate. For Heelsburg and Grove Street, the collision rate was point one oh compared to point two seven statewide. So again, it's about a third. Interestingly enough, the two collisions that occurred at Heelsburg Avenue were both, um, somebody turning onto Grove Street. So one was northbound, the other was southbound, and they managed to hit another person going the same way. I haven't figured out how you do that going into one lane. But anyway, that's what the two crashes at Heelsburg and Grove were. The, the one at, uh, at Chiquita and Grove, and I'll look again real quick, was actually south of the intersection. So it was probably at one of the driveways. That was the closest crash to that intersection, but it was probably at one of the apartment complex driveways because it was about 100 feet away. So, um, in, in five years, there haven't been any reported collisions that occurred at that intersection. The fact that there's going to be some additional homes there, I mean, you've got a winery that is putting trucks in and out of there at, at SEMI. And, uh, apparently they managed to make it through safely. And they're much slower and much harder to get through an intersection safely than a car is. So, um, the sightlines are good. I have a friend out on Grove Street, so I go out there at least once every week or so, so I make that, that left turn. I'm very familiar with it and I, I mean, the sightlines are good. When the complex there on the corner was under consideration, we did the traffic study for that many years ago. Sightlines were actually looked at pretty carefully and for the apartments as well. Interestingly enough, they put the sign right where we told them not to put the sign. We moved a building for sightlines and then they put a sign in it. But there you have it. But the, the apartment complex, as well as the, uh, the townhomes were, uh, looked at for sightlines up and down Grove Street from Chiquita. I mean, Chiquita's on the outside of the curb, that's the better place to be. It's much easier to see if you're on the outside than if you're on the inside of a curb. So, um, you know, we, based on the collision records as well as just, like I said, I drive it at least every other week. So I'm real familiar with it and we've done studies of the complexes that are on both sides of that street. So, um, a lot of history with that location and I, I don't see a specific safety concern.
Thank you very much.
Before you, before you leave, I, I understand the five year, the five year study, but I, I would think that in the last year and a half or two years, the traffic on Grove Street has probably gone up five or 600 percent, if not more than that, with, with the residents on the, the new one on the corner and all of the additional, all the additional work that's been done on Grove Street, there's more wineries, there's all kinds of things. There's, uh, there's probably, not probably, there's close to 500 parking spaces there. So that are relatively new within the last two or three years. I, I see the traffic as an issue and, uh, so I'm not sure if the five year of the study that you're talking about really is true for that corner.
Well, I mean, it's, it's as close as the information as we can get. And the most, uh, the two crashes that occurred were in 2013 and 15. So the ones that have been reported at least were several years ago. One of the things to keep in mind is that a lot of the traffic on Grove Street is on the southern end. That's where most of the industrial complexes type of uses are. If they're going to go to the freeway for a lot, for, you know, most of the part, they're going to go south to get on at Dry Creek as opposed to going all the way up north to, to get out, you know, to get on at Litten, which would be much further and much slower. So, um, I, I would respectfully disagree that the traffic has, has ridden, risen certainly by five or 600 percent. I doubt if it's even doubled. It's, it's always, there's always a perception that a project is going to create this huge increase in traffic. And, um, it, it's not usually quite as much as we think it will be. So typically our, our analysis tends to be conservative, which is, which is good. We want it to be conservative. But, um, you know, we haven't, I haven't done counts recently. We actually are just starting work on another project that will require taking some counts out there. So I will have an answer for you, Mr. Edinger, as to how much the traffic volumes have actually increased out there in the last few years. Because we've got historic counts from this, this project and then we'll have new ones being done within the next couple of weeks as soon as we can get any encouragement from the city. But we'll, we'll have some new data. So, I mean, I certainly would have some data at that point as to whether how much it's, it's increased. But, uh, percentage wise, it's probably not as huge as, as it might seem.
Thank you. So now is the, uh, public portion of our meeting. Anyone who would like to speak, uh, about this particular project, um, please come up and, and state your name and, and make your comments.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I'm not particularly deeply familiar with this project, but I do have some observations.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I'm not particularly deeply familiar with this project, but I do have some observations.
I'm sorry, could you state your name, please?
Yeah, Richard Berg, Heelsburg. The twelve-foot fence to hide, I'd assume the hall road that Seamy uses there. I'm curious about the transition at the north end where Public Road B is. How that works for the people who have the three houses on the north side of that road. It's not clear from, from the elevation, from the site plan and certainly I don't remember elevation showing how those houses look at the back edge of that twelve-foot fence. The path lighting diagram didn't show any lights on the eastern loop that goes around the bioswale and part of that comes back around on the north side of the unnamed creek. But there was reference to a path on the north side of the fences of the houses that face Chiquita. And it wasn't clear to me because it wasn't in the diagram if there are two paths, one on the south side of the unnamed creek and one on the north. But there are no lights on the undrawn path or around the bioswale. And I was curious how that decision was made and why there weren't lights for all the walkways there. Nice to see four workforce housings, housing units in a project in Heelsburg. One of the illustrations showed lawn, with the illustration showing the fences and the public area in front of the fences. And I'm curious if there actually is lawn being put in since we're currently, or a year and a half ago, we're still paying to remove lawns in the city. Nice to see the ADUs. Essentially, it looks like duplexes but benefiting from the designation of an ADU, which probably changes some of the parking requirements for those. But it's nice to see them being incorporated in a project. The mention was made that there were fifty-eight required parking spaces, but there are actually a hundred and nine on the site. But I don't think we usually count parking places on streets as meeting any requirement. So I was surprised at that. The discussion of the EVA at the north end of Public Road, the engineer said there were two gates and I'm curious where they would be and how, what access is provided for those three houses on the north side of that small road. I thought the split of the twelve-foot fence was a great design decision. Regarding traffic, I think the intersection of Chiquita Grove and Heelsburg Avenue can be quite confusing to cyclists who are coming up Grove Street and a car coming down Heelsburg Avenue on a green light, turning onto Grove. The cyclist can't tell where they're going, straight or turning on Chiquita, but often they're moving quite quickly if they have a green light and can't see the cyclist till they're virtually upon them. So when you look at traffic calming there, the behavior of cars and intersection with cyclists there is something to think about. I don't know what the solution might be, but a traffic engineer might have a way of addressing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any other public comments on this agenda item?
I don't really have any comments. Oh, my name's Danielle Northern. I currently reside in one of the residents currently located where this is all going to take place. And I would, I was wondering if there was any information on relocating us since we've been there for about five or six years now. I heard that there was maybe going to be some assistance with helping us relocate and finding a new home. And if so, how much notice we will be given? Will it be sixty, ninety days? Yeah, so it's kind of what I was wondering.
Can we respond to that now or?
Up to the commission and we could respond as we go. I'd be happy to provide a response now. There is.
Yeah, if you could.
There is a condition I was looking for right now, but we did have, we do have agreement from the applicant to provide relocation assistance to any residents that are still residing on the property when, when subdivision commences. I don't have information on, on, on the, on the amount of notice they'll be given, but we do have a condition and, and an agreement to provide that relocation assistance. And I believe it's in the housing condition, so I'll look for that.
Okay.
Follow-up later if, if desired.
Hopefully we'll get a response. Any other comments? If not, we'll close this public portion of this discussion and turn it to the commission. I wonder, Craig, if you could put up the, I think it's slide, probably slide five. Might help us because this is very complicated. Will help us kind of walk through this. This is the third public meeting and the, the fourth time we've met, we had a workshop as well. And so what we're asked to do here, we actually have four resolutions. The general plan amendment would be the one resolution, the rezoning part of it would be another. And then another resolution would include the tentative map, design review, heritage tree permit and the variance. And then we've been asked to also address a, a, a fourth resolution on the mitigated negative declaration and, and revote on that as well. So those, those are the, those are the things we're attempting to do. And I thought maybe we would take the, the, probably the most critical one first because it, basically everything else will flow from that and that would be the general plan amendment. And yes.
If I could, Chair Tracy, we would actually recommend that we move forward with the SEQA resolution first and then follow with the rest of the actions.
Oh, all right. That's, that's fine with me. So we vote on this one. So do we have any discussion or do you want to have a motion on this again for approval? Motion? Discussion?
Yeah, you want to do it? Yeah, I move we adopt a mitigated declaration and mitigation monitoring report. Is it resolution still twenty seventeen dash zero one?
That's it, yes.
Yeah, that's it, I move.
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Or do you need a roll call on that?
I would prefer a roll call.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so I'll call the roll. Commissioner Licky?
Yes.
Commissioner Sivian?
Aye.
Chair Tracy?
Yes.
Commissioner Engler?
Yes.
Commissioner Edinger, sorry, got you out of order.
Yes.
And Commissioner Lex?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, let's, let's, let's turn to the, the, the general plan, the resolution to change the, to recommend to the city council that we adopt the general plan. So I'd like to open it up for discussion and then after we've had that opportunity to see if we have a motion for approving that resolution. So any comments?
I support the general plan amendment because, and I have some additional language I want to have a finding in our resolution. But the key to me is that the size of residential buildings are small. So you can place them within the constraints of the site with more care as opposed to an industrial building where you need turnaround for trucks, a big, large, you know, rectangular building. So just by nature of residential design, it can adhere to the site constraints better. So I support the general plan amendment.
I'm sure I was the only one to start with that wasn't in favor of changing from industrial. However, I think the plan that's evolved over the last couple of years makes a lot of sense. I, I think that I'm still not sold on the notion that we have enough industrial to, to last the next fifty years. However, I know that we're getting closer to the sire development on the other end of town, which will certainly create some more space for us. So my opposition has gone away and I would, I would vote for it.
Joe?
I support the general plan amendment.
I too support the general plan amendment. The entire area now is turning more residential and I don't see any reason why this shouldn't be a part of it.
Me too.
I also support it. I think that the, the site is severely constrained, both riparian habitat and, and just the, the size of it and the configuration of it. So it makes a lot of sense for this to be residential, so I support it as well.
So do we need a motion?
We need a motion, yes, we do.
I'd offer a motion, resolution twenty seventeen oh two, recommend the city council adoption of general plan amendment GPA twenty fifteen oh one.
Second.
Roll call?
Call the roll.
Discussion? I have one item I'd like to add to the findings, if it's agreeable to the commission. And what it would be is on the third page of the resolution, there's item five, five C talks about the project site being constrained. So I'd want to add in there and I can give it to staff. Residential development is better suited than industrial development on the site due to the smaller scale residential units as compared to large industrial buildings with associated truck turnarounds. Smaller scale buildings fit better within the irregular site constraints. And if the maker of the motion would agree to that, I would like to have that in the record. I could argue with you all day, but I'll agree. I mean, we could do, literally, we could put a college in there, we could, we could put a, a plant in there that did all kinds of things in little buildings. So if you wanted in there, fine, but. Great, thank you.
We had a second?
And I made the second and I agreed to it.
Call the roll.
Call the roll. Commissioner Licky?
Yes.
Commissioner Sivian?
Aye.
Chair Tracy?
Aye.
Commissioner Edinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Engler?
Aye.
And Commissioner Lux?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So let's turn to the, the rezoning, basically the land use amendment that would create a, this residential master plan, changing it from industrial to residential master plan. That would go hand in hand with the general plan amendment we've just talked about. So do we have any particular discussion of this item?
I would have thought that two and three would have been one, but.
Yeah.
So Joe, going, going down the row, we'll just.
I have no issue with it. I support it.
I support it as well.
Two.
Me too.
Yeah, I, I think this, this motion or this resolution incorporates the basic redesign that we've hashed out. And so since, since it's basically what we asked for, we support it, I support it.
I support it as well. So we, for this resolution, we have a motion.
I move we adopt planning commission resolution twenty seventeen dash oh three, relative land use amendment.
Second.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Licky?
Yes.
Commissioner Sivian?
Aye.
Chair Tracy?
Yes.
Commissioner Edinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Engler?
Yes.
And Commissioner Lux?
Yep.
Motion passes.
The next resolution to twenty seventeen oh four has several, several pieces to it and it's a little more complicated. It has the tentative map, the, the design review, tree permit, variance and our project conditions of approval. So there's a lot of stuff in here. So maybe, Phil, do you mind?
Sure.
Starting off and, and then we can sort of keep track of where, there's a lot of different things in here.
A couple of preliminary things first. If, if, if anyone wants to see how much work has been put into this, I, I suggest that they drive out on Chiquita and take a right on that little Seamy road and, and look, look at the site. It's got stuff all over it. It's got things going on. It goes up and down. It's right in the creek. It's got, some people call it a, something else, I call it a ditch. It's got, it's a very difficult site. And, and it's got a, a number of people currently living on it. So to have the, the willingness as a developer to take this on and create something out of really one of the most difficult sites in town is, is a testament. Second, I'd, I'd like to echo Mr. Heaton's notion that, that we, we should think a lot, particularly in these kind of difficult projects, about having workshops. I think there are two reasons. One, in this case, the, the planning commission members had pretty clear notions of what they wanted and, and a lot of stuff needed to be changed in terms of the first presentation in order to, to kind of start meeting those conditions. And secondly, from the developer's perspective, if you have a workshop, you're not going to have invested quite as much money and time in, in doing everything down to an eye lash. And so I think that there's more, just a more emotional room to, to look at, to look at changes that might be suggested. So where we can, and, and particularly in difficult projects, I completely agree that workshops are a great idea. And, and generally, I think we all agree that, that the project in, in general meets, meets what we've asked for over three, three planning commission meetings. I've got a, a number of comments on the specific issues that are raised. First, with regard to the, the retaining wall or the, the wall, sound wall, whatever it is on the, on the west side, I, I completely agree with the presentation that suggests that you have the step back wall with vegetation on it. That makes a lot of sense. Second, with regard to the dying oak tree on Chiquita, I think, and, and we've, we've wrestled with all these trees for, for about the three years now on this commission and unfortunately, most of them have come out. I think the one remaining one that we talked about should come out and should be replaced by a forty-eight inch oak to match the, the other three oaks that are, three big oaks that are going to be put in. With regard to the, the creek setback, I would be troubled if this were an incursion on, on Foss Creek because Foss Creek here is out of the city and it, it, it really is beautiful. Quite frankly, the, the, the incursion that we're talking about is an incursion on something that's really, for all practical purposes, a ditch. And I, I'm not concerned about, about that and it seems to me what the developers asked for makes sense. With regard to the, the various, I'd call it to-ing and fro-ing about the specific designs, it, it seems to me that, that there's sort of agreement on everything except that I would agree with the developer that we don't have to change seven and eight. That makes sense to me. And putting the window, I think, in the bathroom as it was rather than the, the garage or whatever that issue was, I, I, I agree with the developer on that. It seems to me all the other things should be decided in favor of, of the way that the staff would like it. And I'm in agreement with Commissioner Licky's proposal or, or I guess the responses to his concerns that we have the lift station be funded by, by the HOA but maintained by the city. And to me, that, that should be a, a hard and fast rule. That is to say, if, if the HOA goes bankrupt or whatever happens, however that is, the city should still maintain it regardless. And the last comment I've got is on the traffic area. I, I'm not thinking that we should, we should do a lot now, but it seems to me that the city, correct me if I'm wrong, but the city is going to have money to, to look at Heelsburg Avenue comprehensively. Is that correct? That, that's still on? Is that right, Craig?
That is correct.
Okay. And it seems to me clear that in that context, that intersection and the redesign of the right turn off Heelsburg Avenue going south on Grove will be something that will be looked at to, to have some sort of traffic calming. So that's my take on the specifics.
Thank you. Joe, do you want to make overall comments about this particular resolution?
I don't really have much to add. My, I think about the lift station was been addressed. I don't have an issue with lot seven. Uh, I don't have an issue with lots seven and eight, I think they're fine as they sit. The variance, I, it's, it's pretty minimal, and I think it's important to maintain lot structure. And I just think the applicant did a pretty good job of meeting all of our concerns and, uh, and requests.
Thank you.
Phil pretty well covered everything. My concerns were addressed, um, particularly the noise, um, from the train. The ma- maintenance of the area in the, um, variance, um, was, was addressed. So I'm, 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 I'm satisfied with everything.
Thank you. Jerry?
Yeah, I, I think that we've seen this project, uh, I think Phil said three times or four times now. And, um, so it's, it's been moved and changed and certainly gotten a lot better. I was so far behind it, I thought we'd already done design reviews, we looked at it so many times. But, um, I think that there's little things in there that, that, um, well, first of all, I, I think that the project fits the property very well. I, I think that, uh, you guys have done a great job in, in putting it in there. You know, it seems like a lot in a small space, but it, uh, it does fit. There's little things in the design that I'm not crazy about. One of them is a plywood fence. I don't think I've ever seen one at work, but, uh, so I'd take another look at that if I were you and perhaps come up with something else to put on top of the, of the block. I would hope that all of, I saw the block, but I'd hoped all the fencing, as well as the front and sides, is split-faced. So everything you see is, has, has some variation to it. The colors are fine, and I think seven and eight looks fine to me. So I, I just don't have a problem with it. I, I'm fairly familiar with bioswales, so I'm not really sure how you're going to, how that integrates into the park part. I, I think that, um, you know, if, if the bioswale works and we do have rain, there's not going to be a lot of people out there in it, I suppose, so it's not a big concern. But I know that, uh, that bioswales, uh, fill up and, you know, there's issues. So if city engineer is satisfied with how that comes out, certainly not up to me. So I, I do like what you come up with.
Jeff?
Well, I want to thank the applicant for, um, coming along this strange trip along with the planning commission, even though it was painful, maybe, um, at times, we've ended up with a better project. It's interesting how some applicants don't want to do, um, concept design review because some applicants are just determined that they know exactly what they want to do. And sometimes you run into issues like we did here. So I want to thank the team. I think we've addressed all the issues I'm concerned about. The colors, um, still give me a little bit of pause because of the, sometimes the structures are darker on the top and lighter on the bottom, and that makes the, the home look bigger. Most western architecture goes with the darker color down below and lighter color above. I think, uh, for example, the Johnson Street development that we just looked at recently was a great example of a color palette. But I'm not sure if there's traction with the other commissioners to refer that to staff and maybe, uh, refine it. So I, I, I support the project. I think that we've heard a lot of good comments from the community, and we've tried to incorporate those into the project, talking about safety, talking about providing workforce housing. You know, we've got all of these conflicting, everybody wants something from their little perspective. And I, um, looked at the grading at the end of the, the driveway on the north end, and the grading should be defined to Mr. Berg's concern. So, um, it's a good project. If the rest of the commission was, uh, supportive, I'd like to see the colors, um, with staff taking care of that. But other than that, I support the project along with all the items that Commissioner Lux went over.
I, I also support the project. It, it, it took a while to get there, but, but the applicant has been responsive. And over, over the last, um, year or so, we've essentially gone from forty-four units to twenty-nine. It's a less dense project. It adds, you know, four affordable housing units, it adds three accessory dwelling units. It's, it's, uh, provides more private yards and public, uh, private space in addition to the public space that, that you had. And you've eliminated a third story, which none of us liked. So I think you all have been responsive to, to many of the comments that we had. So I'm, uh, I'm very supportive of it. In terms of the con- uh, conditions that staff had, and it seems like, um, the applicant was, um, responsive and agreeable to most of them, except for two, maybe one or two, the, 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 this, the unit seven, seven and eight lots were, I think, the one where you didn't agree at all. And I, and I, I think also I agree with, with the other commissioners. Is that something that I think we could give up and, and because that, and not have that as a condition? Yeah, it seems like most of us agree to that. The, uh, the other one was regarding Plan Five, whether move the gable or add a window. And I think we all kind of all agreed that window would be the preferred alternative, and I think you also agreed with that. So that would leave a couple, uh, sort of new conditions. One would be, um, the, um, the, do we have to make the, this pump maintenance, this, this lift, lift, a, a condition? Or is it something that?
I would, I would say, I would suggest that you, you don't. I believe it's already in the conditions, in my opinion. It's, it's covered. And the Polk work director will work on that and refine the details, so there's a mechanism to deal with that.
We just don't want to leave it open-ended, we, there is something here.
Right, there is something in the condition that's firm. It does require that the HOA shall fund the maintenance and the city will be responsible for ownership and, uh, control of it. So that's already in the conditions.
Does that seem satisfying? Yeah. And the other, the other item was the, the oak tree. Phil, you mentioned it, and, um, and would the preference be to add a, add a new tree rather than try to maintain this old one?
That was, that was my suggestion.
I'd like to add a new tree also, and, but it doesn't necessarily have to be forty-eight, it could be a thirty-six because the way oak trees are grown in different nurseries, sometimes you can come up with, so thirty-six or larger?
I'm, I'm not, I'm not fixated on the last twelve inches.
Okay. Well done, Phil.
And I think, I think that might be it in terms of the items that, when we, we heard around the table here. Okay? So, um, colors. And we can, I personally don't have a concern necessarily about the colors, but.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't, I, if I had the choice, I think I would change some colors a, a little bit. But I'm not inclined to open it up, uh, at this point without, without some kind of, kind of, some way of, uh, limiting it, so we're not, we're not throwing it open. So I'm, I'm happy enough, this is, I guess, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't support that.
Does that seem okay?
That's okay.
All right. So do we, uh, can I get a motion?
Yeah, let, let me try this. And, and, uh, uh, I'd like to offer, uh, uh, planning commission resolution twenty seventeen dash four, resolution, uh, for design review, tentative map, variance, heritage tree permits, resolution master plan, and, and with the following to the extent they're not inconsistent with what's already in the conditions. So number one, uh, that the, uh, retaining wall on the west be a stepped wall, uh, in the manner that was presented to the commission. Number two, that the, um, the, uh, kind of dying tree on, on Chiquita, uh, be replaced with, uh, an appropriately sized thirty-six or forty-eight inch tree, oak tree. Number, the next one would be that we, we, we clearly approve the, uh, the, uh, the incursion variance. And that, um, we, we agree to, uh, all of the suggested and even those that are agreed upon changes, uh, design changes to the, to the buildings, with the exception that there be no change to, uh, unit seven and eight, they stay the way they are. And that, uh, on the, uh, is it Plan Five issue, that the window is the solution to that one. And I would, I would like to, to make it clear that if, if, I don't, I haven't read the language, but to me, the lift station is critical and that the, uh, the, the point would be that the, uh, the HOA retains the obligation to fund it, but that ownership and the obligation to maintain, uh, be with the city. So that's the resolution.
A second in.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Licky?
Yes.
Commissioner Sivian?
Aye.
Chair Tracy?
Yes.
Commissioner Eniger?
Yes.
Commissioner Angler?
Yes.
And Commissioner Lux?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Can we take a quick break? Thank you.
Jesus.
Five minutes?
Joe, before you leave, why don't you, uh, turn on the channel?
Wow, this wedding went into that. Yeah.
Lot two. And the reason for lot two is our code is very clear on, on what's the front of a lot. And if basically the front of a lot is where it's abutting a street. Lot two is the only lot abutting a street. So it's clear under our code is that this is the front of the lot. Therefore setbacks, the front setbacks 20 feet, the rear setbacks 20 feet. So probably the houses that the applicant has shown conceptually are not going to fit in there on that lot. The other lots, because they're not on a street. It's our, the way our code is written, it's much more flexible on what the front side and rear are. So the applicant is basically going to, my understanding proposed like this would be the, the front, front, front and front. So these are more, if you look at the, the configuration of the lots, these are more standardized. This lot here, because it's kind of, he's, the goal of, is to basically front it towards the common parcel. It turns the lot, but the front setbacks aren't turning with it because our code is not, we don't have that flexibility in our zoning code. So that's the reason for a lot, for the variances for a lot too. Also, the applicant is proposing attached garages.
Detached.
The detached garage, but the garages are attached to each other. So their, the garages will, in these situations where this is, so this, basically there's a lot line between the garages. Typically in our code for detached accessory buildings, you'd have a three foot setback. So to do less than three feet as he's proposing, that would need, as he's showing on here, that would need a variance. So to do this type of innovative project within our standard zoning district, it's, I think we were working with the applicant to try to make things work. And the way our code is, it's very clear in certain circumstances. So that's, we were looking for flexibility in the code and it just wasn't there on these issues.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, one more question. I thought that each lot had to have fee title access, that it couldn't have an easement for its access.
I, I, I had the same question and I have, and I did ask that question of Public Works. And I, I've not seen that in our code. Fee title access, so the way this is proposed, they will have easements out to a street, but they, they are not proposing fee title access. But I had, I did ask that question when this project came in and I, that was.
You never found it in our stuff?
The answer I got was the way they proposed it with the easements meets our, meets our standards.
Okay.
But I, the question was asked and discussed.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Jeff? I don't have any questions at this time either, so maybe we should hear from the applicant at this point.
Let's do this. Good evening. Jim Hyde, Johnson Street. Chairman Tracy?
Yes.
Commission, thank you for this opportunity. We're really pretty excited to share this project with you. And I apologize, it is a bit confusing. So if you'll bear with me, I think we will try to make some of the questions that are coming before you clear. I'll start off by saying, one of the reasons that we've separated the process, we understand that you would typically do tentative map and design review at the same time, is to get through the design review process, do all the architecture, landscape, architecture, fencing, lighting, all the stuff that has to be submitted is quite a substantial expense. And to do that, when the fundamental concept, if the fundamental concept is not approved by the planning commission, would be a lot of sunk costs that really wouldn't create a lot of value. So we took the strategic decision early on to say, well, can we develop the concept? And bring that to you as a tentative map? And then we might even hear some things along the way that would inform our design review package as we bring it forward. But that being said, in order for you to make an informed decision about the, about the tentative map, I am going to take you through some of the design concepts and where we're trying to go with this. I guess as a little bit of a prelude to what you'll see at a future date. And so that you can understand the nuances in the lots as they're laid out. So are we, are we up Sean? While they're doing that, I, I just wanted to echo something that Doral Heaton said at the beginning. You know, this has been a, it's been a journey, but I've been very pleased with our relationship working with staff. This has not been a standard project, but as we all know from the conversations over the last couple of years, we're looking for some more innovative solutions. And I would say, I think we had a very clear vision that everybody, our staff and ourselves aligned around. Unfortunately, the code is not always clear. So I think staff and especially Public Works Director were really great to work with in, I think, bringing some common sense to some of the archaic nature of the code, but at the same time, making sure that we met the, the, the letter of the law. So with that, I'm going to walk through this hopefully pretty quickly. I know it's been a long evening already and there's people that are here that came to speak. So, so what I want to do quickly, and bear with me, but I want to explain the cottage court. Because this is a term that's used a lot and like a lot of great planning ideas quickly gets diluted by bad design. So I think in order for you to make a good decision and decide if this lotting pattern works, you need to understand what are the key criteria that makes a cottage court what it is, live like it is, and provide an innovative form of housing. Talk about the proposed project and then some of the key issues that I think you were trying to address in your earlier questions. So first of all, what defines a cottage court? This is a product type that's been around for about 20 years, started up in Seattle. The godfather of cottage courts, Ross Chapins, wrote this book that came out recently, really great book that talks about it. Well, some of the things that he talks about that really, what he's learned, I think he's done about 10 of these now, is it's about six to 12 units. You get bigger than that, you lose the neighborhood feel, you get smaller than that, you don't have the critical mass. There is a central organizing green space and it's important that that green space be framed by the building. So they're pulled up close, there's a building that terminates the green as you're looking at it from the public street. There's a layering of spaces. So you'll see here the green on the, I guess that's the left, the sidewalk in the middle. And there's a real art and science of what happens between there and the front porch. 18 feet is kind of the magic number. If it's too big, people don't take care of it, it doesn't feel right. Smaller than 18 feet, it's too small. And then the other piece is the porch. A lot of places that we're seeing now kind of tack on a token porch, it's four foot in depth, it's not big enough to put a chair on. Everything that we're looking at is about an eight foot porch, which really provides an outdoor living room, which is really important opportunity in this climate. There's a real internal pedestrian connection with walkways with the intent to create chance encounters. Some neighbors know them, so know each other and connect. And you really prioritize pedestrians over cars. So here you see a woman with a wagon pulling her groceries in from. The other big part of this concept is you subordinate the parking. So instead of everybody having a garage that they pull into, close the door, walk into their kitchen and never run into anybody, there's a very clear intention to put the parking on one side of the project, really emphasize the pedestrians in the core, and make sure that people get out of their cars and actually have, have a chance to run into their neighbors. So that is an important thing. And we wrestled with this a lot. We've talked to people as we brought the design forward and it's been interesting how many people said, well, that makes total sense. We, we really like that, that's, we would like to live like that. So, so that's a cottage court. So why a cottage court here? First of all, we think that the cottage court as a model of development really complements the character of Hillsburg. It's the smaller form of housing, it's front porch loaded, there's a lot of architectural character to it. And it really complements, you know, reflects some of the best loved neighborhoods in our community. It fills a gap for changing life stages. So early families that are just getting started or what we're seeing in the open house and some of the people we've talked to, a real appreciation for empty nesters that want to downsize. We had a couple of people say, can I just trade my 3,000 square foot house for one of these? This is great. The other thing is ironically, I don't know how many of you remember this, but three years ago, next week, we did this little exercise. And this was at the public workshop and we asked the community and the people that were there via polling, what would they like to see more of? And far and away cottage court was the number one typology that people would like to see developed within the community over all the other things that were offered. So that gets us to the proposal. Joel went through the, the location and I just wanted to point out a couple of things that we really like about this location. First of all, a lot of people that I talked to about this say, you know, I've never been down in that area. But there's, it's a very interesting neighborhood. It's a, this site is really a transition and it's an opportunity to, I think, continue the pattern of single family development in there, but also provide some different forms. But it's less than a half mile to the, the future smart station and to the transit station. It's even shorter distance to the Foss Creek Trail, which would allow you could come right up Kennedy, get on the trail, go right into downtown and up to the, the skate park and whatever else. So there's actually the improvements to the bridge, the improvements to Memorial Beach. A lot of great things happening there with the mixed use node that was designated at the chap, right around Old Roma Station. So a lot of great things happening there and we think this could be an opportunity to continue to, you know, create some new activity in that area. We started the project as we looked at the site and did all the typical analysis and all that, and really came to five key objectives of what we're trying to accomplish with the plan before you. The first one is to fulfill this desire for cottage courts here in town. The second is to demonstrate a way to use the remaining residential properties that we have here in town more efficiently. So this is a site that has one home on it. It would be, if it's approved, a site that will have five homes on it. That seems like within an urban growth boundary, that's always under pressure, a pretty good way to utilize land. We wanted to create, and something this is, we've heard in many of the prior workshops, people want smaller homes, but not just less square footage, they need to be well designed in terms of detailing, the quality of life in them. Because we have a relationship with the riverfront right there at the Russian River, we've been working closely with Russian River Keepers. They pulled a section 1600 permit with California Fish and Wildlife, done a full biological resources assessment to try and develop a public-private partnership on how to really improve the habitat in that area and maybe demonstrate how private development can actually be a good citizen for public open space. And the last one is, we think because of the scale of this, it's an infill site, it's close to transit, that we can showcase a lot of the best practices around green development in one project that the community can look to and say, you know, this is a pretty good thing, we'd like to see more of that.
When you say smaller homes, what?
Probably about 1,300 square feet, all on one level. So master on the main kind of things. So we started the process, you know, many of these processes start by laying out lots and we took a little different approach. We said, first of all, what can we do by right? Business as usual plan would be five lots, six to 8,000 square feet, 50 foot minimum width, the driveways would come off of Kennedy. But instead of just looking at lotting, we did everything in three dimensions. So we did it, we looked at everything to see what would be the urban form, the character of the spaces that would be provided by the buildings that we're doing. And so we looked at this and we said, okay, this is what we could do. The commission may not fully approve this, you would have some size, some weigh in on this, but this is really what the code sets up to do. And so then we said, can we use the site more efficiently? If we grouped homes with the open space be more common, could we preserve more of the trees? That scheme would take out most of the trees. Could we create that shared open space? Could we address Kennedy Lane in a different way? Give it more of a, a frontage and some, you know, the homes that actually activate the street as opposed to just back cars onto it? Could we bring varied housing forms into the community? And could we reduce the visual and functional impact of the automobile? So we, over the course of a year, we did 23 different studies. This is just four of them, I'm not going to walk you through each of them, but we looked at different product types, we looked at different densities. The common theme was how to aggregate and create a shared open space and begin to shape and form that space with the buildings that we were creating. So that the porch is fronted onto the space, the, you look in the bottom scheme and actually the scheme that we went to. Yeah, so this home is very important because it terminates the green. And some of those lovely pictures that I showed you from Ross Chapins, the idea is when you're driving down the street, you're looking across this green and there's the home and it's a little cousin here, the ADU terminating that vista. And all of these homes here are fronting on the greens and the secondary greens. And the car and the parking and all of that kind of stuff is in the back. Another thing that we'll talk about that's probably going to come up is we've created two on-street parking spaces here. There's two existing trees. All of the trees that you see in this image, by the way, are not artist's license. These are the existing trees drawn and put into scale. But we've kept the green and brought it all the way out to the street so that it really becomes part of that Kennedy Street frontage, saves the trees and it really engages and connects the open space here to the open space on the other side of the river. So there's a visual, psychological connection there. This is the way it all lays out. So again, we kind of figured out what were the building massing, where did we want them? How did we want to frame space? And then we backed into our lots. So, I want to talk a little bit about how the circulation works. Very, very simple. We've got cars coming in the back and they access their garages from here. They back, the lane is 24 feet wide, so it acts as both a, kind of a drive lane that you can back into. And everything south of Pedronee Lane, named after the, the family that lived there for many years, is pedestrian. So this whole area here is kind of a pedestrian precinct. And then that is kind of richly layered with a number of different walkways at a various hierarchy. So the most prominent walkway is an extension of the walkway that is, starts in presidential states and comes up along Kennedy Lane. And if you've ever been out there, you see a lot of people out here walking, walking on a regular basis. We've been working with Public Works to treat this in a little bit different way. Instead of just attaching it to the curb, creating some bioswales along the edge that are both good for the river, but also create a little bit of a landscape separation. We've got a secondary walkway that circles the green and then provides access to all the homes. And then the little walkways that take you into the front porches of each of the houses and a walkway that is actually part of the, the lane in the back. Parking, probably the biggest issue, we've had two public open houses and I've met with people one-on-one. Biggest issue that's come up time and again, and largely because, A, they're concerned about exacerbating a problem that seems to exist out there. And I think my comment to most of them was, we can't really fix the problem out there, but we promise not to make it worse. So just a very quick recap, you may know this, some of the audience may not. As of code requirements are one covered space per residential unit, one uncovered space per residential unit. Due to the changes in the ordinance and state legislation last fall, no space is required for an accessory dwelling unit. No space is required for guest parking. Again, if it was multifamily, we would have to have guest parking at a ratio of one space per three units. On-street parking would be whatever we could fit along the frontage after you take care of the curb cuts for driveways. So business as usual scenario, this is what we'd get. Five spaces covered, five uncovered spaces, no guest parking, no ADU. Three spaces on the street because that's what would fit between those driveways and the driveline that I showed you. And this is our response that reflects what Joel was touching on is that if we stick within the strict bounds of the three foot setback for each garage from the property lines as we've laid out, we get 10 spaces, they would all be garage and we get our two on-street spaces, no ADU spaces, no guest spaces. That's kind of shows, so that totals up to a 12 versus the 13 spaces in business as usual, 12 in the plan as it sits in front of you. When we come back to you for design review, we'd like to request a variance that would allow us to do zero lot line garages, which allows us to gang them together. It opens up the space between the buildings so that now we can get 10 covered spaces, three accessory dwelling unit spaces and two covered guest part, or two guest parking spaces. The other advantage of this is we've been talking to Pure Power Solar about the possibility of actually ganging these garages. It's a perfect orientation for PV on top of those. If we do a shed roof, which would really be great and kicking it back, we can tie it back into each house in a very efficient manner. So what that gives us as a revised plan is we get the 10 covered spaces. We get two, one to two guest parking spaces, we get three ADU spaces plus a two on space. So we exceed code and we exceed what we get under the business as usual by three to four more spaces. So we feel like that's it. And that's really is something that's just come up probably in the last 72 hours after hearing some of the neighborhood concerns, a little pop-up that we did on Sunday out on the property. The lotting. So what you see here is the plan with a, an early concept of the, the footprints themselves. And this was an iterative process. I know there was a question earlier by Commissioner Engler about why are we looking at stuff like this when we're really just looking at the lot lines? It would be very hard, I think, for you to make an informed decision about those lot lines because frankly, they're a bit weird unless you understand where we're trying to go with the residences. But we didn't want to take the residents all the way to design review because we didn't know how you're going to feel about this plan. So that's where we are. But what you see is each home is a, located, it meets the five foot side yard setbacks, the 20 foot front yard setback. There is a porch that wraps around on each of them. And it is the porches that will differentiate how the homes look and elevate relative to the green space and the street. A big part of these smaller cottage courts is you need a lot of harmony between the buildings, but we need a little bit of differentiation and that will come with some of the materials and come with the porches when we come back to see you during design review. But what you see is we've got this lot home here with its ADU in the back. We've got these two homes here that do not have an ADU. Lot five has an ADU right here and lot one has an ADU right here. It has the longest walk to its garage, but when you think about it, that's not much different than somebody that's living in town, parked on the corner and coming around the house to the front of their house when they're carrying groceries. So, and this again is a strategy that's worked all over the Northwest. So we don't think there'll be one person that would have a hard time falling in love with that. This just shows the lots and again, this helps, I think, illustrate probably more clearly the, you know, the lot pattern. And the reason these are not like just straight lines is because we were trying to accommodate, we had a couple of masters here. We had to get our 50 foot by 90 foot minimum dimensions. We had to maintain 6,000 square feet. We had to be able to put our garages in here. And if we don't get a variance, make sure we could fit a two-car garage and still get our setbacks. And we had to connect this lot to its garage on its same lot. And we were trying to obviously maintain a very clear focal point, which is the green. And so that is really the document that is before you as the tentative map, but there's all of that background in there. There's a question that came up about potential variances. I touched on the one, which is the garages. This is the setback or the development envelope as it exists on the plans now. And so we're going to be coming to you for three variances once we refine our architecture. And those relate to these three places. The garages, which I already mentioned. Joel touched on the somewhat technical idiosyncrasy and challenge that we've got with the rear yard of this lot because it fronts, that has to be its rear. And the third one will be the location of the accessory dwelling unit. So I'm just going to walk you through those real quickly. Again, you're not debating on those tonight, but it's, we wanted to be preemptive and full disclosure in bringing those to you tonight. So the parking garages, again, we want to develop a strategy where we can gang the garages to both accommodate accessory dwelling units, create PV and provide some guest parking. So we would be looking for a strategy there for some variances, largely a zero lot line approach to the garages. The second one is because again, this is the front yard of lot two, its rear yard has to be 20 feet. The way these units actually live is the side yard of each house really becomes the private living area. So, and it will do that by coming out the side of the house, having the side yard and actually via easement, grabbing the remaining five feet on the other house, which would be kind of a unwindowed wall or a clear story windows along there. So they have about a 20-foot backyard or side yard that really becomes their private courtyard. We would like to do that with this house so we can use the same floor plan, but it will require a nine or 10-foot encroachment into the rear yard with a technical rear yard setback. So that's the one that we're coming back for. And then the third one is also equally complicated, which is the accessory dwelling unit. We would like to pull that forward closer to Kennedy Lane, which would be encroaching into the 20-foot setback of that lot, which is the front yard setback, in order to accommodate that accessory dwelling unit, parking space that we'd like to get. And the way that we have approached this and rationalized this is there is a, there was a clause in the code where if you have two buildings that have different setbacks, you can average those. So the property that is adjoining us directly to the north, 97 Kennedy Lane, space one, has about a two-foot setback. This one will have a 20-foot setback and when you average those two, this meets that average line. So it maintains the street plane, it's consistent, does kind of a transitional step back and allows us, gives us the room for that extra parking space, which is, I think, the prudent thing to do is, even though we don't have to have parking for accessory dwelling units, it's probably the right thing to do as we all know. I want to end by just talking about, I mentioned, we really wanted to think differently about Kennedy Lane. And we've all been through the design review, or design guidelines process. A big part of the guidelines, I think in essence, and we learned this back in the housing conversations is, what makes Hillsburg special is the way that buildings address the street. So there's a lot about architecture and design and style, but it's primarily how does, how do homes engage the streets in terms of porches and frontages and all of that. So we wanted to make sure that our plan and the way we were addressing these houses was laid out so that we could create an interesting streetscape along Kennedy Lane. So this is the property framed in here, 125 Kennedy Lane. And what you see as you would be driving down here is first of all, the little accessory dwelling unit fronting on the lane there. So providing kind of that active frontage, windows and doors and transparency there. Pedronee Lane going back to the garages. The house that is really fronting on the green, siding on Kennedy, but treated like a front with doors and a porch that wraps all the way around. So we see a lot of houses that kind of side on public streets and they bring the fences all the way up and they do a little token gesture. This, this would be really a outdoor living space that would wrap all the way around and activate the street on that end. Then you've got the green that I showed you that comes out and connects and touches the green or touches the street with another accessory dwelling unit back in the distance and the lot one home back in the distance. So you get that terminated vista looking across the green back through the fence to another home. And so just to close, I wanted to show you, so this back to where we started, which was a business as usual plan. This is Kennedy Lane under that plan, a, a perspective, if you were walking down the sidewalk there, what it would be under kind of a, as of right, business as usual kind of plan. And this is our proposal, which shows how the green, the existing trees, this house wrapping around and fronting itself, the accessory dwelling unit, the parking spaces, the bioswales and green space in there, all kind of, we think, adding a lot of interest and character to Kennedy Lane. So with that, I'm going to stop and I guess we turn it back to you for questions or to them for questions or however you want to handle it.
Well, we're in our public hearings session, but we'll ask, any questions you have with the applicant right now?
You said that they're all single family or single level?
That is correct.
All the ones you showed are two stories?
They're, they're one and a half stories. So they have volume via the, you know, there's a pitched gabled roof inside, so volume, vaulted space. And there may be a mezzanine in the kind of, so if you look at, and these were just on as massing models, but this right here. It's a high plate height and one of the things about the small homes, we're probably using a 10 to 12 foot plate height on the spaces. And then this would be a dormer that might have a small mezzanine loft in there that meets the one-third floor plate, floor space code requirement.
Questions?
Yeah, Jim, does your group control the lot to the south?
It is a separate entity and a separate group of investors, but I am a part of that LLC as well.
Thank you. And because it's late, I, I want a yes or no answer to this question. Have you thought about the design of, of that, of what you put on that lot in relationship to this lot?
We have.
I can't find what I'm looking for. No.
Probably come back. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Well, since the hour's late, it is open for public comment. So if you would come forward, I'm not sure how many people want to talk, but try to keep your comments relatively brief if you could. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Turk and my family and I live at 97 Kennedy, number one, which is the property just north of the proposed garages for this project. So needless to say, our home will be impacted by the construction there and namely by the, the light, the natural light that will come into our home and also the, the parking situation and also the trees that have some privacy. Yeah, you'll see our three trees right there. So we were, we had some concerns about the project, but we had a one-on-one meeting with Jim and he was really open, giving us some plans and some alternative suggestions, including some variances that he could propose for the design that would give us some more light into our home. So we were really appreciative of that. And also just the solutions that he had come up with for parking. And also just that it's a thoughtfully constructed design, attractive and good for pedestrians is something that we're all interested in, living on Kennedy Lane. And also the, the attention to the, the riverfront property and the work with Russian River Keeper, we appreciated. So just wanted to say that we came in, in support and curiosity out of, for the project. We are looking forward to seeing what the commission has to say about it. And we, we hope they're open to the creative solutions that he has proposed to me and my family for helping us be satisfied with, with a new project. That's all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else?
Hi there, my name is Bonnie Buckingham. I've lived down in the presidential Kennedy Lane area for 30 years or since those homes were built. Your plan, I think, is great. The homes that are there are great. And you've answered my question in regards to that vacant area south of when you're asking. So it almost sounds like what I'm seeing more would be proposed. So again, that all looks great, but my major concern is, again, I've lived there for 30 years. And when we tried to get a sound wall put up, we were informed that we were low-income housing, which none of us were informed of. So I'm, I'm curious. Now, are these homes also going to be, you know, I hate the term low-income housing because none of us think of our homes as low-income housing. But unfortunately, a lot of homeowners have moved out and they've rented the homes, so our area has gone downhill. But what I'm trying to find out is, is this area here also going to be bringing value back to our homes instead of bringing it down? The plan is great, but my other concern is I've seen in Hillsburg that numerous roads have been repaved, repaved and repaved. repaved and repaved. Our area down here has not been taken care of. So I'm trying to find out if this is proposed, or even if it is not proposed. Are our roads, as you can see in some of the areas on Kennedy Lane, the pictures that were up there, are falling apart? So again, as the river is right across the street from there, we need to find out if this is given, and even if it isn't, we would still like our area down in the area where a lot of people don't know about to still be taken care of, instead of being run down. But again, your proposal, I thought, was great. It looked great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mark Dacker, Hillsburg. I, first time I've seen the presentation, I've seen the paperwork before. But it is a very unique concept, and I think it is a great design, and it has lots of potential. Although you're not looking at the architectural side, you kind of get a feel, I get a feel, for the quality that they're trying to build in, and make it a livable space for a number of different types of people who would either have children, or they'd be moving into a downsizing type situation. So I think it does have a lot of great possibilities, and think that the little details that, that seem to be kind of of issue can be worked out so where they all come together and, and meet the requirements. Even though there are some exceptions that need to be approved, I think, given the uniqueness of the property and, and the desire for it to blend in with Hillsburg in certain, certain aspects and architectural, and just the size and the density issues, I think it hits a lot of, a lot of points really well. So I just would like to see it move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bruce Abramson here in Hillsburg, and I'm here basically in support of this project. I'm taking a slightly different approach here. I'm on the Community Housing Committee, but I'm speaking as an individual only, only for myself here. And what I like about this is that this project is meeting two of our five objectives on the Housing Action Plan. And the Housing Action Plan was just recently passed by the City Council and also by our committee. So this is going a long way. And one of the main objectives here that is helping out is that there are three accessory dwelling units, which may be more affordable living units, and they're part of market-rate housing. And this is something that our HAP has been trying to encourage, which is accessory dwelling units. So if there are market-rate units, then maybe there will be an accessory dwelling unit as an attachment to it. So this is a, is a wonderful idea. This is more than 50% of the market rate. If your previous project, which had 29 units, had 15 units that were ADUs, it would go a long way towards meeting our goals on the HAP, the HAP plan, right there. And then the second objective that this meeting is that it's encouraging the development of mixed product types, which is what we're trying to do. We're trying to get away from the standard, large lot, 2,000-square-foot home, expensive home. And this cottage court is a product that will, it's a product type that I think the community will like very much. And it's a design, they call it, it's appealed by, the design will help as far as a couple of things, the affordability and such. So I'm just, in coming to an end here, you basically have eight units on one acre here. And this is great. We're trying to encourage, I shouldn't say "we", I said, or the committee through the HAP is trying to encourage more density. And with the density, we hope that there will be more affordable housing units that could be a part of this. So I really compliment the, you know, the applicant here for what he's doing. Thank you.
Thank you. More comments?
Richard Berg, Hillsburg. As a previous member of the Housing Committee, I don't want to repeat what Bruce said. However, I don't have to, I can speak without worrying about whether I'm speaking for the Housing Committee, because I'm not on it. This is a very exciting project, and part of it is because it will press you against some of the limits of the way things are written today. And when the general plan is open next year, your experience evaluating whatever the architecture comes in here and the variances required may strongly influence the way the general plan is examined with regard to land use. I think the Housing Committee will hopefully address some of that in the ways that inhibits higher density and makes it difficult to do things like that. Given the weird layout of the lots, it's interesting how they've struggled to create a project that meets so many criteria set out in the Housing Action Plan. And when you look at the streetscape and the parking available, it's actually quite exciting to think that this can be done on a lot that's under an acre and still be attractive and have essentially seven, eight dwelling units and 13 parking spaces. And the interesting thing about this is, when you look at the cottage courts that exist in Hillsburg today, across from University Street, there are a couple, and other places. This has taken essentially the same level of density and created a much more visually satisfying tableau than the ones that are a straight driveway with parking to the side, and the units are stacked up between the parking places. So I hope you approve this project, and I'm really excited and looking forward to seeing what the architecture looks like. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Lee Buckingham. I also live here, been here for 30 years. Project looks nice. I think it's a little dense. I'm worried about fire. There's a fire in that back house back there. If a fire department can get back there and get that out in a timely manner. The green, is that public, or is that just for this complex? My other issue is parking, two park, there's two-car parking right there. Right now, when the summer hits, the beach, there's parking all along there. Everybody tries not to use the parking spots that are provided at the river, at Memorial Beach. So a lot of this parking is going to be very difficult. Other issues I have also is the fencing and the railing. A lot of trees that are along there, I don't know if we can take some of those out or prune them back, but I've been pruning them for the last couple of months now, getting them back off the street. It's very difficult to walk along there and cars come through there. Hope that, that part of the issue will be looked into also. It is a narrow street. Putting that sidewalk in there and those two parking spots, good luck with that. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Tammy Gass, I live on Sherman Street. I just, seeing this all really for the first time tonight, too. I'd heard a little bit about it. I know the applicant through some work that they've helped us do with our home, but also with other projects that they've done here in Hillsburg. And I always think that the things that you see here really reflect some thought that, as Mr. Berg said, probably never went into. A lot of these similar projects that dot the landscape around town with density and one small driveway with all the cars parked there. So, and for those who live on Kennedy Lane, I think this new project, if it's approved, will definitely bring more people your way. I have friends that live over in that neighborhood, and, and this is just a really beautiful reflection of what you can do with a small space and be thoughtful about it and bring community to all the people who decide to live there. I've been to the northwest. I've always been very drawn to places like this that have a sense of community as they built the project, when they've been really sensitive to looking at the landscape and creating common spaces and places that people can gather together. And so I think it really builds community and connection. And I would like to see more projects like this as we look at future housing needs in the community. I think it really does a good job of utilizing small spaces in a very thoughtful way.
Thank you.
Chair Tracy and Commissioners, Alan Cohen, Center Street. I don't want to repeat a lot of things that people said, but I find it's pretty remarkable that when you look at this isometric up here aerial perspective to get eight units on there, the amount of open space that you see in that green and the experience walking down the street, it just shows what you can do when you consolidate the cars on one side of a project and create a lot of pedestrian, open space. As was mentioned, and as is obvious, it bumps up against a lot of zoning code issues. And so hopefully you can find a way to be somewhat flexible. I think it'd be a great, I think it'll turn out nice, but especially I think it'll be a nice example of an alternative way of looking at things and could prove a good model for other projects. So I would give it my support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Unger, Plaza Street. I don't know Mr. Hyde. It's the first time I've seen this, but I'm deeply aware of some of the challenges that Hillsburg is faced by with its, with its housing needs. And clearly, this could be an aha moment for you as the planning commission. And I urge you to embrace change and be flexible. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, we'll close the public nature of this, and we'll bring it back to the commission. And why don't we go around? You want to start, Jeff?
Yeah, sure. First off, with regard to parking, we don't typically count the spaces on the public street. So that's just a little bit of a clarification. There's, my understanding is the green would be private. And if I'm wrong, staff throw something at me. So it is unusual, it's innovative, and I support it. I understand we've had other projects where they come in with just the lines of a subdivision mapping. You have no idea what they're going to do, and we said, well, you have to meet, you know, the, you have to meet the density. And they all kind of nodded their head, and we're hoping in this situation, where maybe we got too much information, is great, because we get to see what the applicant has in mind. So I support it, and we have to be very careful. We are not indicating any kind of direction whatsoever regarding the variances, because that's not what we're looking at tonight. So we can't address those directly. We just have to take the information in. I support the project.
All these modern things, I forget from time to time. I too support the project. I think it's very innovative. I, I know that we are limited with space in Hillsburg, and I think this is a way to keep or to get back some of our young people. Know our schools need, need students, and I think that if we continue to build just very big, expensive houses, we're going to lose a lot of what makes Hillsburg what it is today. So Jim, I think, I think you've done a hell of a job. I would have never thought of this, other than having gone to the same meetings that you went to and saw this come up. I think there's, on, on the corner of Piper and, with the Piper and Fitch, just a one, one lot up or two lots up, there's something similar to this on a smaller scale, and I've always thought it looked really, really good. It's, it's very nice. So I applaud you, and I hope this, this works out for you.
I too think this project's going to be something that we here in Hillsburg can be very proud of if it works out. It's, I appreciate the explanation, I had, but I had read and fairly understood what was going on. A little bit concerned about the encroachment. Is, rather than doing a lot-line adjustment and just creating the, giving the parcel or the little one-inch, whatever it is, to the trailer or the coach park there. The agreement, I'm not certain really has words of conveyance as far as the easement goes. And so I want to be sure that when we get to that part at the end, that it's clear what is to happen to that parcel in the event that coach goes away. So I'm concerned about that, and that's that. And, and then, of course, there's some things with, with, if we do go forward with this project that I would really be concerned about, which I can't get into now. But I do hope that, if you noticed from, if you, I think you were here for the project before you, if you would be willing to work with us in the workshops, and we can probably do this in a, in a fairly economical way for you, and hopefully we can all come together and have good ideas together to make this work, because I think it's rather innovative and I thi, I think it's wonderful. So I have no problem voting to approve your map.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry that Commissioner Botterini isn't here, because if you remember at the, at the last workshop on the, on Doyle Heathens project, that he was concerned that all we were doing was approving, approving houses, housing projects that looked like the rest of Hillsburg. Well, this certainly doesn't. I've had the, the pleasure of listening to Mr. Hyde for close to 10 years. Is that right, Jim? In, in one guise or another? And not only for 10 years, but practically every year. And I, I say this in the most complimentary way. You've put your money where your mouth is, and I thank you for it.
Yes, I'm also supportive of this. I just want to make clear for everybody that this, this is a limited action here. This is approving a tentative map, and I want to make sure everybody knows that. There's a lot to go before we get to design review and other aspects of this, and variances and what have you. So we, it, it meets all of the findings for approval for this kind of thing. It, it, it complies with the density range. It, it, there's no physical constraints here that we see to development. It seems suitable, very suitable, flat lots. You know, there is not environmental damages, potentially. In fact, this will be enhancement of the environment, it appears to us. And then also, it, it, it meets a lot of, of the other standards for, for what we require for a tentative map approval. So I think it's, I think it'll be a very interesting project. We're really eager to see the, the next iteration of what you bring to us, Jim. And so I'm very supportive of it as well.
Can I make one more comment about the heritage tree?
Yes.
It, it seems to me that, on balance, given how, how much has been preserved and how dense the project is, I, I'm, I hate to, I hate to cut down trees, but I think this one will die in a good cause.
Thank you. So could we call the roll?
Well, I'm making a motion to we adopt a resolution in 2018-
That'd be good.
-dash 05, a resolution of the Planning Commission recommending that the City Council approve tentative map 2017-dash-05 and approve heritage tree application at 125 Kennedy Lane.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Now we can call a roll.
Okay, Commissioner Sivian?
Aye.
Chair, Chair Tracy?
Yes.
Commissioner Eninger?
Yes.
Commissioner Engler?
Yes.
And Commissioner Lex?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, just to finish up the meeting. Is there any new business?
No.
No. Commissioner, subcommittee reports?
No.
I don't have a subcommittee, but I do want to make a report. I, I think that there's a lot of stuff to go through here. I mean, there's, I don't know how many pieces of paper there are, but I will tell you that the volume of paper that we get has increased. However, the value that we get from it has definitely increased. Staff reports are, are- Staff reports are super. I mean, they're just a hell of a lot better than, I mean, they've come a long ways, I guess.
My second thought. Thank you, Joel.
Awesome staff.
I third that.
So I guess we're done.
Director does have some announcements today. So there will be, as I mentioned, we are going to, we've launched the...
Not quite done?
We've launched the North Entry Plan Process, which is the Quaker Hill site. And so the open house date will be March 28th. It's a Wednesday. We're confirming the, it'll be in the evening. I think we've already asked you if you were available. We're just confirming the start time of that for our notice tomorrow. So you'll be getting an email from me with the exact time. But there will be an open house followed by a planning commission workshop. Most likely, that workshop will start at 7:00, just for your calendars. And we're working on noticing and engaging the public on that. And then really great news that we have, well, it looks like Larry has left. I was going to announce two new staff people.